Okay, I see by my watch that it's about four thirty, so let's get started. We're gonna do something a little different today. There is, in the city of Bella Vista, a Board of Zoning Adjustments as well as the Planning Commission. The Board of Zoning Adjustments is made up of all the commissioners on the Planning Commission. So, and because of the way the ordinance is written, we have to have a separate meeting. So, starting tonight, we will have a Board of Zoning Adjustment meeting, then we'll close it, and then we'll start the Planning Commission meeting. So, for now, I want to call to order the January meeting of the Board of Zoning Adjustment for the city of Bella Vista. Would you call the roll, please?
Here.
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 Was the law here?
Here.
Here.
Okay, I see we have a quorum, so first thing on the agenda would normally be the consideration of the minutes from the last meeting, but since this is the first time we're meeting, ladies, we don't have any meetings. For the same reason, we would then go to unfinished business, which we don't have any. So, we'll go into new business immediately, and Ms. Robertson, you're on.
Okay, since this is our first meeting, new system, much louder, sorry about that. This is the new meeting of the Board of Zoning Adjustment, as Mr. Farner has just explained. So, the first item of business should be to adopt new bylaws or rules and procedures. Those are included in the packet on the website and in the packet in front of y'all today. I just wanted to start off first, hopefully you've had a moment to look at it over the weekend, and I wanted to first offer the opportunity to ask any questions before I dive into my spiel. Any questions? Okay, I wanted to call special attention to the hearing procedures in Item E. Everything else is pretty similar, the functions mentioned, you know, the zoning variance is a literal code, that's what our popular zoning variances are when someone doesn't like something in 109, they have the ability to seek a variance from you guys. People also have the ability to seek variances of interpretations of the zoning staff. That's not happened yet here, but that is one of your guys' functions. And then the third fairly uncommon function you guys is the zoning district boundary determination that you guys have the power to do. Pretty standard, the board shall not permit any variance in the use, basically, you can't say that a commercial entity can variance to have a use within the residential zone, is all that's saying. You may impose conditions in granting a variance to ensure compliance to protect adjacent properties. And then, of course, the appeal of the Board of Zoning Adjustment must go to the applicable court system, unlike the Planning Commission, so. But hearing procedures is really where I wanted to call your attention, because these are where they're a little bit more different than your typical Planning Commission procedures. It's more of like the quasi judicial court-like setting, specifically provision number four, the order of the hearing. Number one, typically your staff, so your planners up here, will give their zoning variance report, and we are limited to ten minutes to give our presentation, that's fairly common. That's how our old Board of Zoning Adjustment used to do it. And then the applicant will be able to give their rebuttal or their side of the case, and they have fifteen minutes to speak. Then the chairman may also offer a public hearing, where the interested property owners, I copied the Planning Commission and offered the five minutes to speak, just like PC public hearings, and then that would follow up with an opportunity for a rebuttal to the public hearing, where they have an additional ten minutes to speak. The old chairman of the BZA used to do the timing, I know the current chairman's not here, we can continue that here, or planning staff can do the timing, it's kind of up to you guys, but that is my initial question on that, because the timer is, you know, normally, staff never uses ten minutes to speak, I know we don't like talking that much, but sometimes, you know, the fifteen minute or the ten minute rebuttal maybe where, and of course, the five minutes for the public speaking, you know, definitely, the timer's definitely needed there. So, just kind of initial thoughts on that, just as a whole, with all of you here, is it, does it matter to you guys if the chairman does the timing or if staff does, or anyway, whichever way, other?
I think it's just.
Staff?
Yeah.
That would be the easy.
Okay, do you guys have any other questions about the order of the hearing? Especially those four points, are there, and the timing, the strict timing?
Well, under Item Three, it's not the timing, but I'm just, the wording, interested property owner's opinions, can that just be changed to the public?
Under Item Three, under that section, Section Four says interested property owners' opinions?
Mm-hmm.
I don't want that to be misconstrued, that only property owners can make comments.
Interested public, or just the public opinion?
Yeah, I don't know if that's.
Just citizen opinion.
Yeah, I don't know if that's nitpicking or not, but I.
I think that's another, I think that needs to be changed.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, probably, if I can motion to amend the proposed rule, to make that change before you vote on the entire package.
You want to?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. We have a second, my question. All right, would you call the roll, please? Farner? Yes.
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do we need to make a motion? Do we need to vote on these rules, or are they part of the ordinance?
No, no, you need to vote to approve your rules, so it'll need to be a general motion to approve.
Do any of the members have any further questions about it, or comments? Well, then, I would entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
All right, do we have a motion in a second? Would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
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 Is that fair?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so they are approved, and the next thing under new business is selecting a chairperson and vice chair and secretary. Do you want, do you have anything you want to say about that, or?
I don't have anything to add, just your bylaws require you to elect them every year at your first meeting, so this is now your first meeting, so someone needs to be nominated, voted for each of those three positions.
Well, Daniel was nominated, for sure, by me.
I can.
Daniel.
Or chairman.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to take them all at once, or should we just, let me take them one at a time or all at once?
You can do either, if you anticipate there might be a.
Let's do them one at a time.
Some more than one candidate for a position, doing it independently.
Anybody else want to nominate somebody for chairperson? Okay, then, Daniel has been nominated to be a chairperson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, when, the next time we see Daniel, he can run if I.
That's what he is, he's not being.
Yeah.
Okay, we need a vice chairman.
I'd say we go with Mr. Farner.
We have nomination, we have a second?
What's that, what'd you say? Second?
Yeah, we need a second on the nomination, okay. Any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of Farner being vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, aye, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're voting.
Yes, yes, certainly, yes.
All right.
Are you voting yes or no?
Yes, I am voting yes, yes.
All right, then we need a secretary, and I would nominate Ms. Clausen. Do we have a second?
Excuse me, is the chair allowed to make a motion?
Sure.
Is the chair allowed to make a motion?
I thought the chair was not allowed to make a motion.
The mayor cannot in a council meeting, but, but Mr. Farner is, remains a member of the, of the board, so he can make his own motion if he wants.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, well, I nominated Ms. Clausen, is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Okay, well, let's vote on that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's all of our new business. The next item is the open discussion.
I have an issue. I have one whenever you all are done with yours.
In the open discussion?
I do, I have something I need to talk to you about.
Okay.
Okay, so, if, that's permission to proceed, as you all know, you all, as Board of Adjustment, denied a variance on K-wood, so, back in Jensen Contracting was the applicant in particular case, this was a house actually that had been constructed and was within setback. Jensen Contracting was the applicant in particular case, this, you recall, filed in court, this was a house actually that had been constructed and was within setback, and I want to make sure you're aware of that, you all determined that there was not a house for variance. I anticipate filing a, filed in court, response and document here in the next week or so, and I want to make some procedural things we have to deal with in the court, there's nothing for you to do at this point, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, and I've advised you that that has occurred. There'll be some procedural things we have to deal with in the court, there's nothing for you to do at this point, so I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that, and I've advised you that that has occurred.
Okay, okay. I guess that is all of the business. Is there anything else for open discussion? So, as far as regular meetings, the city council meets January sixteenth at five thirty, so as far as.
The city council regular meeting is January twenty-second.
January sixteenth at five thirty. The next planning commission, the city council regular meeting is January twenty-second at six thirty. The next Board of Zoning Adjustment, the next Planning Commission and the Planning Commission will meet on Monday, February the twelfth, and they will be separate meetings. We'll have the Board of Zoning Adjustment and the Planning Commission first, and then the Planning Commission after. And they will be separate meetings, we'll have the Board of Zoning Adjustment first, so the Planning Commission after. Ends the Board of Zoning Adjustment, we are adjourned.
I saw you raise your hand, do you?
I was going to clarify what you said.
Okay, so I, that's the, that's the, ends the Board of Zoning Adjustment, and we are adjourned. Okay, I, this time, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Bella Vista Planning Commission for January twenty, twenty twenty-four. Please call. At this time, I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Bella Vista Planning Commission for January twenty, twenty twenty-four. Please call the roll.
Here.
Okay. First item on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes from our December the eleventh meeting. First item on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes from our December the eleventh meeting. If, once they're in this book, okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the December eleventh meeting.
If, once they're in this book, okay.
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
From the December eleventh.
Aye. Any opposed, we have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. The next item on the agenda is a public input. Any opposed? And this is a chance for anybody in the audience to speak to the public, but it would only be for items that we would not be having a public hearing on later on in the audience to speak to the Planning Commission. But it would only be for items that we would not be having a public hearing on later on in the agenda further down. So, if there's anybody out there who wants to speak to the Planning Commission about any item that's not on the planning, not on the agenda further down, please come forward to us. Which is a waiver, we'll close the public input, we'll go right into unfinished business, which is a waiver, that's a waiver associated with a. Two oh two three five one five nine one.
Both of these items, A and B, this would be property line adjustment, two zero two three five one five eight seven, and waiver, two zero two three five one five nine one, have been withdrawn by the applicant.
They have been withdrawn?
They were withdrawn, and two zero two three five one five nine one have been withdrawn by the applicant.
Not sure where we go from there, do we have to vote on any of that?
No, it's just made of record, and you move on to new business.
Okay, I'm not sure where we go from there, do we have to vote on any of that?
No, it's just made of record, and you move on to new business.
First thing on the agenda is a waiver, two oh two three five two four nine three, and a lot split. First thing on the agenda is a waiver. Two oh two three five two four nine three.
The applicant's requesting a waiver from Section one oh seven dash two four nine F three, and requesting to combine the existing parcel, which is sixteen dash seven eight zero zero five. The applicant's requesting a waiver into the existing parcel, sixteen dash seven eight zero three, and requesting to combine the existing parcel. Subject parcels are located along County Road, which is a subcollector for the Master Street parcel, sixteen dash seven eight zero five. Various drainage utilities easements are dedicated per this plan. Subject parcels are located along County Road, the subject site is the residential state and bulk and area requirements. Various drainage utility easements are dedicated per this plat and the Master Street Plan. All incidental subdivisionary criteria have not been met with this request, which is why the applicant is seeking a waiver of Section one oh seven dash two four nine F three, due to the proposed nineteen point one one acre track measuring more than four times as deep as it's wide. Which is why the applicant is seeking a waiver of Section one oh seven dash two four nine F three. Public comment has been received, nineteen point one one acre track measuring. Staff recommends approval of this request based on the condition that the Planning Commission approves the waiver. And I believe I remember, public comment has been received at this time, and staff recommends approval of this request based on the condition that the Planning Commission approves the waiver.
Do any commissioners have questions?
And I believe I remember, or representative from the applicant this year.
What are you counting as width and depth on this, because the way I look at it, it's not four times.
Do any commissioners have questions, staff?
It's the street frontage.
What are you counting as width and depth on this, because the way I look at it, it's not four times.
So, that smaller section for the street frontage counts as the width. Street frontage? And then it extends the length from there. At the building setback. So, that smaller section for the street frontage counts as the width, and then it extends the length from there.
Well, I do, I'm, I'm a little dense on this one. Can you go to that map up there and show me or tell me what you're trying to do?
Yes.
Well, I do, I mean, I, I'm a little. I was struggling with it, and it sounds like you might have been too. Can you go to that map up there and show me or tell me what you're trying to do? Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I, I was struggling with it, and it sounds like you might have been too. Creating one lot, and the waiver is for what?
This is section.
Yeah.
Creating one.
Creating one lot, and the waiver is for what? Yeah, that's, thank you, I was having a little trouble understanding what this was all about. Anybody have any other questions?
So, this isn't related to fire code or anything?
Yes, that's, thank you, I was having a little trouble understanding what this was all about. Anybody have any other questions?
So, this isn't related to fire code or anything?
Yeah, that's correct, this is our subdivision code in Chapter one oh seven, so anytime you move a property line, you can't make a new lot that has a building width more than four times, but, yeah, it's more intended for, you know, the grid. That's correct, this is our subdivision code in Chapter one oh seven, so anytime you move a property line, you can't make a new lot that has a building width more than four times, but, yeah, it's more intended for, you know, the grid, I guess, picture perfect grid system and subdivision, that's really rare in Bellevue, so this is definitely one of the items that have been flagged during our reform, but.
I'd like for this one not to carry over.
Yeah, it is very, it is a very common labor here.
Aside from that, I'll tell you, there's ample room to build on the lot.
That is, yeah, that's true, I mean, that's one of the basic things, with these bigger lots, that's normally never an issue, especially if it's over three acres.
Aside from that, there's ample room to build on the lot.
That is, yeah, that's true, I mean, that's one of the basic things, with these bigger lots, that's normally never an issue, especially if it's over three acres.
Aside from that, there's ample room to build on the lot.
Any more questions, staff? Is the applicant here, and does the applicant want to add anything to the staff? If you do, come forward, if you don't.
Yeah, just to clarify.
Any more questions, staff?
Seventeen acre track.
Is the applicant here, and does the applicant want to add anything to the staff?
Not trying to subdivide, not trying to build a subdivision.
Yeah. Okay, anybody have any questions at that?
All I'm trying to do is combine it so I can build a whole, some twenty acres, that's it.
Okay.
Not trying to subdivide, not trying to build a subdivision there.
Yeah, okay, back to the commission, anybody have any questions or discussion about this one?
It seems to me that getting rid of a lot that has no current road frontage.
Okay, back to the commission, is there any further questions or discussion about this one?
Well, it seems to me that getting rid of a lot that has no current road frontage.
Okay, back to the commission, is there any further questions or discussion about this one?
Well, it seems to me that.
Anything else? All right, I would entertain a motion on the waiver first, we have to approve.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion, if you have a second, all right, I would entertain a motion on the waiver first. All right, would you call the roll, please?
Make a motion to approve? Yes.
Motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Have a second?
Yes.
All right, would you call the roll, please? Okay, the waiver is approved, so now we need to.
Yes.
Deal with the lot split, the combining of lots. Yes, I guess the staff has already made their presentation now, we need to, are there any questions with the lot split? The combining of lots, does the applicant want to add anything to it? I guess the staff has already made their presentation on that, right? Okay, is there any questions with the staff? All right, well, I would entertain a motion to.
Is there supposed to be a public hearing?
Would you call the roll on that, please?
Okay.
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve lot split.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second question? Yes. Would you call the roll on that, please? Any waiver are approved?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, the next item up is a lot split, number two oh two three five one eight four one, your lot split and your waiver are approved.
This property is located between McNally Road and Jack Crabtree Road.
Next item up is a lot split, number two oh two three five one eight four one.
The applicant is requesting to split the existing parcel. This property is located between McNally Road and Jack Crabtree Road. Subject parcel. Again, located on McNally Road, which is an arterial major. The applicant is requesting to split the existing parcel, which is shown as a subcollector for the master and three. Subject parcel. Various drainage and utilities, men are dedicated on this McNally Road, which is an arterial major. For the master sheet plan and Jack Crabtree Road, which is shown as a sub collector for the master sheet plan. The request. Various drainage and utilities, men are dedicated for this plat and the master sheet plan. Subject site is zoned as unincorporated Benton County. The length measures more than four times the width. As in, the applicant's recently submitted a waiver, request for this requirement, that will need to be heard in the February. As track two's length measures more than four times. Length measures more than four times the width. Due to deadlines cannot accompany this, the applicant has recently submitted a waiver request for this requirement. The applicant has submitted in writing that they waive the sixty day review requirement with the intent to request the Planning Commission to table this request. Due to deadlines cannot accompany this, may accompany the waiver. So, in addition to the waiver request, the applicant has submitted in writing that they waive the sixty day review requirement with the intent to request the Planning Commission to table this request to next month, so may accompany the waiver.
Okay, so I'm understanding that they're, they're tabling, they're asking the table this lot split at this time.
Correct, staff cannot recommend approval of this request. They're likely to bring the waiver in with the lot split.
Okay, do we need to do anything? So, I'm understanding that they're, they're tabling, they're asking the table.
Yes, sir, you do.
Lot split at this time.
Someone needs to move to table to next month and second.
They're likely to bring the waiver in with the lot split.
I moved to table.
Okay, do we need to do anything? Second, would you?
Yes, sir, you do. Yes, sir, you do. Someone needs to move to table to next month and second.
I moved to table, LSP.
All right, so the motion is to table it until February.
You need to put a date on the motion.
Any questions or any discussion about that? All right, so the motion is to table it until February.
Yes.
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 Any questions or any discussion about that? Yes. All right, then that one is tabled, the next item is a lot split, two oh two three five two four three eight.
Yes.
Ms. Workman?
Yes.
The applicant here is proposing a subdivision of two parent parcels.
Next item is a lot split, two oh two three five two four three eight.
To establish one two point seven nine acre lot, that's going to be located south of the intersection of Glasgow Road and Highlands Boulevard. The applicant here is proposing a subdivision of two parent parcels. The easements have been dedicated as required. This site is, that's going to be located south of the intersection of Glasgow Road and Highlands Boulevard. And the lot area requirements have been mentioned of this district, because the east has been dedicated as required. This site is, the zone R two exceeds residential two acres, and it's more than fifty feet wide and one hundred feet deep, much like the previous request that we've seen, this request does not meet Section one oh seven two four nine F three, because the eastern property line as indicated on that red diagram above. Much like the previous request that we've seen, this southern property with. Request does not meet Section one oh seven two four nine F three, because the eastern property line as indicated on that red diagram above. Exceeds the southern property width, the applicant has also provided staff a writing, a letter and writing requesting. I apologize. The applicant has also provided staff a writing to allow those requests to this lot split, and the waiver of the four times length versus the width to run concurrently on February twelve. The applicant is here to request to table this request. Happy to take any questions.
Is the applicant here?
Good evening, my name's Jane Roskowitz, I represent Cooper Communities. This is much like the previous submission, we're trying to get the waiver on the same agenda as the lot split. Good evening, my name's Jane Roskowitz, I represent Cooper Communities. This is much like the previous submission, and we're trying to get the waiver on the same agenda.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Lot split.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to table this one until February me.
I'll make the motion to table this item until February.
Would you call the roll, please? Okay, anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to table this one. Okay, the next item is a zoning ordinance amendment. Ms. Robertson, you're on, would you call the roll, please?
Okay, this is on page fifty-four of the packet, if you're following along online.
Yes.
Yes.
The first page will pull up the staff memo, followed by the proposal of the ordinance itself. This will require a public hearing after I'm done giving my spiel. This is the zoning ordinance amendment and for this state law and ordinance, but then the development code has to have a public hearing. Okay, this is on page fifty-four of the packet, if you're following along online. This has been met, a legal ad was posted, school board letters were sent, and of course, this is an extra, we put it on our website as well, two weeks in advance. This will require a public hearing after I'm done giving my spiel. However, at the request of Councilman Honchel, who is also present tonight, staff is proposing a new outdoor lighting ordinance, this is development related only, this is triggered by development, this is not a street light ordinance, this says an extra, we put it on our website as well, two weeks in advance, notifying the public of this public hearing tonight. However, at the request of Councilman Honchel, who is also present tonight, staff is proposing a new outdoor lighting ordinance, this is development related only, this is triggered by development, this is not a street light ordinance, which is more, new fixtures and then replacement, a single family light fixture development. If you'll see, the proposal is for new existing lane use that is not single family. And as well as additions, there are also mimicked from our zoning code, such as emergency lighting, additions over ten percent, or sign lights that are already regulated under our sign article, new fixtures, and then replacement, total replacement, ballast, starter control, etc. Projects are proposed to be exempt from that. Existing lane use that is not single family. Staff is bringing this forward, there are other ones out of the top five, Northwest emergency lighting, cities that do not address outdoor lighting at all. Sign lights that's already regulated under our sign article, and of course, maintenance, this one is referenced pretty heavily off of Ballast Two. Rogers has a little bit more different approach than the other two sister cities, and of course, Springdale as well. Staff is bringing this forward, as we're the only one out of the top five, Northwest Arkansas regional cities that do not address outdoor lighting at all. Relatable to Bella Vista. Fayetteville, Bentonville both have a lighting ordinance. This one is referenced pretty heavily off of. Um, Rogers has a little bit more different approach to the other two sister cities. Which is why it's so large. Has their own approach. Such as the Arkansas Dark Sky. Associations, their model ordinance and the international dark sky model ordinance. As well as a few others from like EPA. Given our size and of course, Hillside O A. American Planning Association, all of recommendations. I also reference several documents that are also included in the packet, which is why it's so large. Which is of course, the entity we hire to report our development code. Association, their model ordinance and the international dark sky model ordinance. As well as a few others from like EPA. And APA or zoning standards, American Planning Association, all of recommendations. That is what is regional planning and a few other outside. Recommendation, why it's not being put in the development or subdivision code. Is typically we hire to reform our development code. Within zoning that only apply to your city limits. We don't have a unified development code here in Bella Vista that's typically things that are relative only to. Again, uh, zoning code. Amendment, a new article, that would be known as article ten. Again, another recommendation, why it's not being put in the development or subdivision code. Is because typically you have development standards that are within zoning that only apply to your city limits. We don't have a unified development code here in Bella Vista that's typically. While safeguarding the rights of people in the community to save, help and attract the environment. This article would provide standards for outdoor lights to save our life, health, property, safety, welfare, while encouraging creativity, variety. Compatibility, enhancing the city's image. The intent and purpose of this, I really wanted to hone in on is to promote the well being of the community by establishing standards that ensure the provision of outdoor lights. While safeguarding the rights of people in the community to save, help and attract the environment. This article would provide standards for outdoor lights to save our life, health, property, safety, welfare, while encouraging creativity, variety. Compatibility, enhancing the city's image. Picking back off of that, um, one of our components of Bella Vista, such as the trees, as you remember, we've done. Our action plan, call action, however you want to call it. Another one of those is. The staff believes anyway, it's our sky or dark, dark sky here. We are unique, goals, however you want to address it, within our comp plan for the next twenty years. We are to protect and enhance. It is a natural element of Bella Vista. We are known for being natural. Bella Vista, um, and the staff believes that this is in line with the intent of this goal right here. Another one of those is. And as noted on the next slide. In our sky or dark, dark sky here. We already need to break it down, the identity. And then the next slide breaks it down. You know, most prominent dark skies, starry skies here. Basically creating design standards that help protect and enhance our natural environment here in Bella Vista. And our settings. This is in line with the intent of this goal right here. And as noted on the next slide, that's a goal. And our goals. Um, again, this kind of breaks it down, the identity. There is a modification in here, the general standards. If someone was redeveloping a site. Basically creating design standards that help protect and here is our natural environment here in Bella Vista. Our settings. That is option number two in our general standards. So, existing lights that may not be compliant with this, since we've never had an outdoor lighting. Can be modified so they do. I did want to note as well, um, there is a modification in here, the general standards. Such as pointing down, adding shield or hoods to make sure that trespassers are not. There is an option here to modify residences nearby. That is option number two in our general standards. So, existing lights that may not be compliant with this. We've never had an outdoor lighting. Can be modified so they do their code. Um, and there's some. And along with dust, excessive noise as well. Blair, things like that. And really, we just want to make sure that light stays where it's supposed to be. It's not encroaching on neighbors. We have a C one or neighborhood commercial entity. We want to make sure that light stays on that commercial property. Lights are one of the most commonly identified, um, nuisances. With that, I have nothing else to add. Unless you want to ask me any questions about the specific provisions in here. And really, we just want to make sure that light stays where it's supposed to be. It's not encroaching on the neighbors. Um, if you have a C one or neighborhood commercial entity, we want to make sure that light stays. On that commercial property. By minimizing light pollution, da 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 da. With that, I have nothing else to add, unless you want to ask me any questions.
Then you violate that by.
Specific provisions in here, I'm happy to take questions.
Exempting residential, so that's a concern for me. Um, your, under purposes, your.
There's a reason.
Goal or purpose is to protect the privacy of property owners by minimizing light pollution.
Regulate residential design standards. So, uh.
Then you violate that by.
There is, I think, arguably a divergence of opinion, but there is a consensus in the region. That this sort of regulation of lighting on a house is prohibited by that statute. Cities abilities to regulate residential designs. We've chosen to take the tactic that our region is doing. And limiting it to commercial because of that state statute. There is, I think, arguably a divergence of opinion. But you'd think it fit right in, would be very useful, particularly in a place like we live in. That this sort of regulation of lighting on a house is prohibited by that statute. The state says nope. With limited exception. We've chosen to take the tactic that our region is doing. And limiting it to commercial because of that state statute.
Friends, that ACA statute.
Very good point you're making. Would norm, you'd think it fit right in, would be very useful, particularly in a place like we live in. But because of the regulation of residential design standards, the state says nope. With limited exception. That's where we are.
Friends, that ACA statute in my staff memo as well. So, lights that flash, bounce, things like that, if it's moving.
So, if I find one, it should be one oh nine, that's two.
That wouldn't be involved in this because anything that's under sign articles exempted from this. So, we would just enforce the current code that we have that addresses moving signs. Typically moving. Um, we only allow, I think the message has to show for at least three seconds. If it's moving. Just pulling from memory on my code. But this lighting ordinance will not address any signs that are exempted from this. That wouldn't be involved in this because anything that's under sign articles exempted from this. So, we would just enforce the current code that we have that addresses moving signs. Um, we only allow, I think the message has to show for at least three seconds. Uh, just pulling from memory on my code. But this lighting ordinance will not address any signs that are exempted from this. Christmas lights are another item as well. They're addressed elsewhere in our zoning code. This is making sure that we don't have giant, like, spotlights that are rotating throughout the sky. Really, any kind of movement at all, you want the light to be static. Christmas lights are another item as well. Um, they are addressed elsewhere in our zoning code. This is making sure that we don't have giant, like, spotlights that are rotating throughout the sky. And really, any kind of movement at all, you want the light to be static.
Bella Vista decided to opt out there?
Well, that's interesting because I actually pulled this specifically from Bentonville's prohibited. The wording is copied exactly from.
Okay, then I guess they're not enforcing it.
Yeah. Um, the illumination of attraction, I think, was pulled from Fayetteville and then the operation of search lights was pulled from Bentonville.
And so, why did Bella Vista decide?
And again, you guys can totally modify this with your recommendation to City Council. I just pulled what I thought was closest to Bella Vista from existing ordinance. The wording is copied exactly from.
Okay, then I guess they're not enforcing it. Where I think I'm.
Um, the illumination of attraction, I think, was pulled from Fayetteville and then the operation of search lights was pulled from Bentonville.
What I, I worry about two things. One, their ability to.
And again, you guys can totally modify this with your recommendation to City Council. I just pulled what I thought was closest to Bella Vista from existing ordinance.
Socialize this with them and also security, I worry. Where I think I'm limited their ability to have lighting that allows them to properly use business owners to see. What I, I worry about two things. One, their ability to, to use their property that they. Do we have any money for them? For this?
I haven't received any input from anyone since publicly notifying.
Security, I worry.
The city and the school boards. I've received no public comment.
Okay, and how long do we have? Security cameras, or do we post?
Uh, two and a half weeks. Almost three weeks. Uh, but yeah, as of today, even after publishing this on Friday. I haven't received any input from anyone since publicly notifying. The security, it just says basically, the whole intent is just to make sure you're not pointing your security light out upward. And just keeping it down on your property.
Or do we post?
So, yeah, uh, security lights and all that should still be A okay, so long as it's not pointed directly into the window of like a adjacent property that is pointed downward or has a hood on it. Um, but I will say, this is not intended to limit the security. It just says basically, the whole intent is just to make sure you're not pointing your security light out upward. And just keeping it down on your property. Um, so yeah, security lights and all of that should still be A okay, so long as it's not pointed directly into the window of like a adjacent property that is pointed downward or has a hood on it.
Right, it lets perception, right? I could perceive light spill over as something different. We don't have any properties on there that's complaining. So, at what point along the property line? What's the acceptable lumen level at that property?
There is an exhibit in there attached for the, you know, I guess trespass.
Light spill over is something different than.
The whole idea is that it stops right at the property line for the attached exhibit.
So, at what point along the property line, what's the acceptable lumen level at that property?
This would be enforced by the planning department during our development final check.
Attached for the, you know, I guess trespass.
A staff member's going to go out to the property.
The whole idea is that it stops right at the property line.
Just like when we check our plantings and the parking and measure all the parking spaces and all that, this will just be an added item to the development final checklist. This would be enforced by the planning department during, during our development final check.
We're not attaching a number to those light spill overs. A staff member's going to go out to the property. I don't believe when the lights are zero lumen at the property line.
Just like when we check our plantings and the parking and measure all the parking spaces and all that, this will just be added items to the development final checklist.
Still have a little bit of concern from my experience attaching a number to the light spill over. Especially when it joins residential. I don't believe that there's going to stand zero lumens at the property lines bill over to the joint. It's going to be a problem issue, so. I don't know what those numbers should be. I don't know the best way to handle that because I guarantee you what someone's going to look into. Uh, it's just, I would rather have a hard number. With lighting, the light will be lumen metered. Especially when it joins residential. Test, even if we need to just say that it's minimum. It's going to be an issue, so that's, that's good enough. I don't know what those numbers should be. But that's a whole, but it'd be something I would suggest staff look into. I would rather have a hard number that would go out with a lumen metered.
Do you want to recommend the change?
Than to just say that it's minimum. So, I would like to recommend that's good enough.
Uh, would you prefer that to be added to the one oh nine, two ninety three general standards?
Uh, yes, that's acceptable.
Okay.
And like I said, I don't know what that number should be.
Recommend the change?
I know some other cities.
Goes to the council?
Have a number. I don't know what that is off the top of my head.
Um, would you prefer that to be added to the one oh nine, two ninety three general standards? Um, and then Fayetteville didn't have one. Bentonville might?
And I may just be overly concerned about it. And like I said, I don't know what that number should be.
I can definitely look into it.
I know some other cities.
Aren't lumens mentioned in number five?
I don't know what that is off the top of my head.
Lumens are mentioned in number five.
I can look at Springville because Rogers didn't have one.
Right, but that's the lumen output of the light, not the spill over of the light.
Right. Bentonville might? Yeah, that's an absolute match.
And I may just be overly concerned about it.
I, I can definitely look into it. Any other comments?
Lumens mentioned in number five? Then, I'm sorry, are you going to bring it back to us next month?
Right, but that's the lumen output of the light, not the spill over of the light.
I believe it's up to you guys, if you guys want to send this back for further review or if you want to send it forward with a modification. But I probably need more time to find an exact lumen. Any other comments?
If you've got a doubt about what you need to have in there.
Are you going to bring it back to us next month?
I mean, you don't need to approve it unless you.
That, I believe it's up to you guys, if you guys want to send this back for further review or if you want to send it forward with a modification.
Do one of two things, table this to consider further next month. Or vote to send it to deny it. Bring you back something next to have in there.
Or we could send it to the council. And then have an amendment to it somewhere down the line.
If the council wants to do that, probably you could.
If the council wants it.
Do one of two things. Table this to consider further next month.
Well, it would seem to me, from what I'm hearing, that we would like to have something in there. Or we could send it to the council.
As it is.
And then have an amendment to it somewhere down the line.
If the council wants to do that.
I would like to look at it again.
If the council wants it.
So, after you've, after you've recommended it to them, it's out of your hands.
Well, it would seem to me, from what I'm hearing, that we would like to have something in there.
We've had a public hearing. I'm trying to, I feel like I'm screaming in this, I'm sorry. We've, have we had the public hearing yet tonight?
I would like to look at it.
Okay, we need to have the public hearing tonight.
So, uh.
That we've publicly noticed.
Do we need to vote to send it back?
And then you can make the decision you need to make after you have your public hearing. If that decision is to table and to consider further next month. I'm trying to, I feel like I'm screaming in this, I'm sorry. So, we've, have we had the public hearing yet tonight? Okay, we need to have the public hearing tonight that we've publicly noticed. And then you can make the decision you need to make after you have the public hearing. If that decision is to table and to consider further next month. That's fine.
Do we consider road construction maintenance?
Okay.
So, uh, no.
It's routine maintenance.
No, I'm sorry for interrupting you, you're on the.
So, like, lighting based on road construction?
Here she.
Sorry, I've turned it off. When road crews determine that they want to work at night? On the exemptions, on maintenance, do we consider road construction maintenance?
Yeah.
Is that included under maintenance? It's routine maintenance.
Uh.
So, like, lighting based on road construction?
But that could be included as another modification. I was going to say maybe more along the lines of emergency, but not really. But maintenance is more like for when cell towers need to, you know, crawl up there and change out their giant lights or whatnot.
Is that very, very temporary, short focus, yeah.
Uh.
I'm just, I don't know.
I think there's some gray area on that. But that could be included as another modification. I was going to say maybe more along the lines of emergency, but not really. But maintenance is more like for when cell towers need to, you know, crawl up there and change out their giant lights or whatnot. I don't know if that would apply to this article because it's not a development item. It's not being triggered by development.
If, if that would rise the level of being, because of where it's located.
If it's, you know, like the lights they bring out that are temporary to like work on the road.
Yeah, or if they're working, anytime they're working at night on construction.
I don't know if that would be triggered by this article because it's not a development item. This is only for development. So, someone's expanding a non-single family home where they're building something that's not a single family house that has light. That's when all of these can be enforced.
Yeah, or if they're working, anytime they're working at night on construction.
Or our dots out there. I don't think that would be triggered by this, no structure being built. Yeah, because that's, this is only for development. Trigged on them at all. So, if someone's expanding a non-single family home where they're building something that's not a single family house that has light.
Board of adjustment.
That's when all of these can be enforced.
Correct.
So, if someone, if road crew or like streets department or whatnot is just going out.
Board of adjustment.
Or our dots out there, there's no development. There's no structure being built.
And I did check with other cities, that is.
Then we wouldn't be able to enforce this on them at all.
Okay. Except for Fayetteville, they do it a very interesting way, but.
So, will the Board of Adjustment be hearing variants at all?
Um, I just confirmed, because I knew that would be a question I'd probably receive. Like the BZA or BOAs in other cities, um, basically consider.
And I did check with other cities.
And all of them do. Um, I just said Fayetteville has a unique treatment to it that's a little bit different, but. The consensus was that the BOAs slash BZAs, in the most part, it's a zoning variance. Um, I just confirmed, because I knew that would be a question I'd probably receive. If like the BZA or BOAs in other cities, um, basically consider bariances from this. If like the BZA or BOAs in other cities, basically consider variances from this. And all of them do. I just said Fayetteville has a unique treatment to it that's a little bit different. But the consensus was that the BOAs slash BZAs, in the most part.
We'll have that public hearing now. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to address the commission about this proposed ordinance? So, in my understanding, we have to have a public hearing on this proposed ordinance. Okay. We'll have that public hearing now. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to address the commission about this proposed ordinance?
When we started talking with Reese and Nichols. This is one of the topics that stood out to me. When Scott circled, we were listening. What kind of triggered all this? I don't know if you guys, I don't know if Ms. Robertson participated in the meeting. Input session when we started talking with Reese and Nichols.
You know, I drive, I live out in the Highlands, way out in the.
This is one of the topics that stood out to me. I was amazed. And I don't know if you guys paid attention or have paid attention or seen.
All of the storage units that have gone out directly. They've gone up. And there's quite literally a house off to the right. I drive, I live out in the Highlands, way out in the. So I drive through Missouri all the time. And I don't know if you guys paid attention or have paid attention or seen. All of the storage units that have gone out. My concern is, and why, there's quite literally a house off to the right. I didn't. Down the road. I mean, I guess that kind of sort of. This has nothing to do with residential, but the minute that lighting went up. And storage units. We don't build or implement, I mean, it's daylight twenty-four seven like that. My concern is, and why? You know, we try to looking down the road for future commercial development. How far the light shines and all that kind of stuff. I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just, you know, my concern with that is that we put a lumen standard on the ordinance in our community. You know, due to topography, you're going to have lights that just go spread different ways. Get into the abstracts of how far the light shines and all that kind of stuff. I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm more than happy to. My concern with that is that if we put a lumen standard on the ordinance, you know, by the time this goes to. You know, due to topography, you're going to have lights that it's just going to spread different ways. But I just, I wanted to bring this forward to, you know, I think it's more than happy to work with staff. To, that is, get something amended. From our community, that's not from an outside source. That's what you got to hear from. But I just, I wanted to bring this forward to, you know, I think it's important that we craft. So I just wanted to make sure that this was crafted for the communities, by our community. From our community, that's, that's not from an outside source. Ms. Robertson, I was amazed at how much research and detail, you know, we're supposed to do this for the community. But I, I just wanted to make sure that this was crafted for the community. This is no way, I mean, I think the, that very, I can all think. Ms. Robertson, enough. I keep throwing. I'm sorry about that. What your concerns are, I think that's mainly addressed just by screening of the careful consideration. This is no way, I think that's kind of the direction that very. Would sound. At least the screening would. Yeah, that's right. I keep throwing. Sorry about that. What your concerns are, I think, I sure hope you guys give this some careful consideration. Just by screening of the lights.
We appreciate your interest in bringing this up.
Oh, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the commission?
You know, projection. So anyway.
Where are your loans? 109 Mayfair Drive. I was amazed that.
We appreciate your interest in bringing this up.
The fact that Bellevista began in two thousand and seven.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to address the commission?
Planning and zoning ordinances occurred around two thousand and ten, if my memory serves me correctly. I'm really shocked that I incorporated. This aspect into our planning and zoning and development codes way back then. Because it wasn't that long ago. The subject of lighting and light control occurred around two thousand and ten, if my memory serves me correctly. Containment and go back. Really shocked that we did not incorporate, which when all this encountered it. Our planning and zoning and development codes way back then. Was popular then because of the night sky thing. The subject about lighting and light control and concept just around a long time. Containment, go back, probably into the early eighties, which when I first encountered it. And a lighting. Was popular then because of the night sky thing. I would be in full support of it. I think it needs to. So it's been around a long time. Redos, renovations, remodeling, as well. Part of this. Because when you do a lighting remodeling of a site of this nature. Doing a lot of things. I would be in full support of it. It will add to the cost perhaps. Needs to address. The reality is it will improve the redo's, renovations, remodeling and the image of this as well. As part of this. Move forward for this. Because when you do remodeling of a site, you're looking at doing a lot of things.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission?
That will add to the cost perhaps.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And it's my understanding the staff is going to bring it back to us at a later date. With the changes made, we're talked about. Is that right? Is there anyone else who would like to address the commission?
If you vote to table it with that direction. Yes, staff's happy to. I've got the stuff written down just depending on what you guys vote to do tonight.
It's my understanding the staff is going to bring it back to us at a later date with the changes made. Is that right?
I'm still concerned about what minimizing means since we have no.
If you vote to table it with that direction. Yes, staff's happy to. I've got the stuff written down just depending on what you guys vote to do tonight.
In my mind, we're placing an ordinance to limit light without placing a limit on light. I'm still concerned about what minimizing means since we have no. I'll leave it up to the rest of the planning commission, but I would like to make a motion. But add some sort of. In my mind, we're placing an ordinance to limit light without placing a limit on define what minimum is or maximum. So I mean. Is that the property line?
Okay. When you want to make a motion to table this.
Yeah, I would like to make that. Yeah, I'll make that motion and add some sort of measurable metric in.
Okay, would you call a roll on that please?
Or maximum.
No.
No, I'm not.
Okay. When you want to make a motion to table this.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. And.
If you have a second?
Yes.
Okay, would you call a roll on that please? Pass it. No. All right, so that moves us into open discussion. Do we have anything on open discussion tonight?
Yes, I do have a agenda.
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead.
Okay. On this ordinance requirement that a lot cannot be more than four times its depth of frontage. Do we have anything on open discussion tonight? The four to one ratio. If that were to apply only to R1 zoning, all of the things on our agenda, all those waivers would have gone away. Because they're either not zoned, zoned already or zoned R2. The depth of perhaps that might. Frontage can't be something for staff to consider. The four to one ratio. If that were to apply only to R1 zoning, all of the things on our agenda. I think the reason that was originally put in was to prevent somebody who's got a bunch of road frontage about putting a whole bunch of seven by four hundred foot launch with driveway. Something for staff to consider.
Flag law.
Yeah. Well, no, they're not flags unless they have a flag.
Wow.
And I think the reason that was originally put in was to prevent somebody who's got a bunch of road frontage about putting a whole bunch of seven by four hundred foot launch. Developers used to, used to do that. But if it applied only to R1. Well, no, they're not flags unless they have a flag. All these other waivers would go away. So.
I don't see how that matters if it's still a built a lot.
Are you wanting staff to look at that now or make sure that gets included in the reform? Because it's already been flagged.
It's an old. Developers used to. I think the staff ought to look into that because that was a question I had. Seems like we're getting a lot of requests for waivers for that very issue.
Okay. Are you wanting staff to look at that now or make sure that gets included in the reform? Because it's already been flagged for the reform. To just kind of.
I think the staff ought to look into that because that was a question I had. It seems like we're getting a lot of requests for waivers for that very issue.
Okay.
So you're on to it. See if there's something that can be done.
So we're supposed to report to you when we administratively approve things? So I just wanted to give you a rundown for the record.
You want to do something?
The administrative reviews that we approved in twenty twenty-three. Yeah, I've got actually a few things for you guys. Was the Manchester Tunnel. That is large scale three eight zero four six. That was approved in early twenty twenty-three and finished this winter. So if you're familiar with the tunnel that goes under Manchester Road that connects over to Blowing Springs. So I just wanted to give you a rundown for the record. That was the first one. The second one was the street department wash bay. That was recently approved and it has not, or it did start. Ground is broke, buildings are laid. That was approved in early twenty twenty-three and finished this winter. So if you're familiar with the building tunnel that goes under Manchester Road that connects over to Blowing Springs. And then five one eight three eight. That was the first one. Second one was the street department wash bay. That is being renovated and has not, or it did start. Ground is broke, footing is late. That whole thing is getting basically a facelift. Parking lot's getting redone, landscape is getting done. Grading's getting fixed. The walls going away, all of that. And then five one eight three eight. Town Center East parking lot was recently approved. Five two seven two six. That is being renovated. Ourco apartment was recently approved. Today, actually. There are two new structures going out in our planning area that are affiliated with the development. The runway, grading's getting fixed. The field's going away, all of that. Plane area out there, the campsite area. Has not started yet though. And then of course, we had one. Actually, this is the first one I've seen since I've been here. The Arco improvement was recently approved today. That was administratively approved. There are two new structures going out in our planning area that are affiliated with the existing developments. The runway or the. Right of way was required because they were already dedicated from prior approvals. Campsite area. So new lot was dedicated. And then of course, we had one. Actually, this is the first one I've seen since I've been here. We've had our first incident, a lot split that was administratively approved since I've been here the last four years. It is five two one two five. No easements or. Right of way was required because they were already dedicated from prior approvals. So new lot was dedicated. But all the dedications were there to be able to get that one approved and through the door. And one of those involve more than one reason. But if you guys are interested in what you guys approved last year. But you guys have approved two final plats, twenty-three waivers, twelve lot splits, two CUPs, conditional permits. It's really exciting because we've done a lot last year. Your board of zoning adjustment body approved. Twenty zoning variances. No PZD last year. Ten large scales. And you know, one of those evolved more than one reason. So that kept us pretty busy. Because large scales. But you guys have approved two final plats, twenty-three waivers, twelve lot splits. Two CUPs, conditional permits. Your board of zoning adjustment body approved twenty zoning variances. No PZDs last year.